Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, yeah, I don't have the zoom on, but.
I think it was the one of these TVs was on.
Uh, sure. Sounds, sounds like it's, uh, sounds good to me. Hey, let's go ahead and get started. This is a work session.
Yeah, I don't have the zoom on. Do you want me to be on zoom for the presentation?
No, you don't need to.
Well, sure. Good evening. This is a work session with Green Belt City Council. My name is Emma Jordan. I'm the mayor. Council, can you introduce yourselves, please?
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Prota.
Danielle McKinney, Councilmember.
Jenny Pompey, Councilmember.
Amy Nysel, Councilmember.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
And Councilmember Silky Pope is online. We can't hear you, Silky Pope. But you're there. We know you're there. Yes, now, yeah. Fantastic. Yes, you're good. So tonight, we've got a really exciting work session. We're going to be talking about rent stabilization. And we have Dr. Christina Stacy, who is with the Urban Institute, that's going to give us an overview of the national landscape around rent stabilization. And also, I believe, a former council member, Martin Mitchell, from Laurel, is also going to be joining us. But just to get started, let me quickly share this information that we do hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays, several times a month, to exchange information from community stakeholder groups or other information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken. Our work sessions and meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws to the residents and others concerned over councils deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. So we'll pause periodically for public comment. Since this is a presentation, I think we'll, we'll actually go through the bulk of Dr. Stacy's presentation, pause for some council discussion, and then move to what questions and answers from the public. So if you're in the room and you want to make a comment, raise your hand after being recognized. You can go over to the podium there. And you'll need to provide your name and address. If you're comfortable doing that, we need that information for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can submit a comment using the Q and A tab at the bottom of the screen. And once again, you'll need to provide your name and address. We don't take anonymous comments from Zoom or from the other streaming platforms. And if you are, in fact, watching on cable TV, Facebook, or YouTube, you can send us an email at questions@greenbeltmb.gov. With the public comment, please limit your remarks to three minutes and stick to one topic related to the question and the consideration. And as always, you ask, we ask you to avoid disparaging or questioning the motives of others. In general, let's all be civil in our remarks. So as I said before, this is a really exciting work session. And we've been actually talking about rent stabilization for a while. We've actively been reviewing rent stabilization programs throughout the past year with multiple public work sessions focused on policy evaluation, regional trends, landlord tenant concerns. So we, we were trying to track county and state legislative developments, kind of looking at the Permanent Rent Stabilization and Protection Act adopted by Prince George's County in March of 2025, which set rent increases caps, actually, and outlined enforcement provisions. And they continue to, to work on that act. And I believe they are still taking a close look at how they're going to go about implementing that. So it, it's a real honor to actually have a representative from the, the Urban Institute, Dr. Stacy Christine, Dr. Christina Stacy, who is an expert on rent stabilization. And she can kind of provide us with, with the way of the land as far as national research, lessons learned, policy designed, just the regional context. But first, I just want to acknowledge City Manager Sumroon. How are you, Mr. Sumroon?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, residents.
Okay, okay. Dr. Stacy, it is such an honor to have you with us tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be here.
You flew in from the West Coast.
Yeah, from the West, Alexandria.
Alexandria, okay. So do you have a slide presentation?
I do, yes.
Quite a bit of information. Been studying this.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's a complicated policy. So I'm excited to talk about it with you all today.
Okay. Now, you might want to snuggle up to that.
A little bit closer. Is that better?
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Great. Okay, should I dive right in?
Yeah, dive right in.
Feel free to stop, ask any questions along the way, whatever is useful. So yeah, my name is Tina Stacy. I'm a Principal Research Associate at the Urban Institute. I'm an economist by training, but I always like to say, don't hold that against me. I'm going to cover some of the basics today about rent stabilization, the history, kind of its state, the state of rent stabilization across the US, and what we know about how rent stabilization can be designed to best, best help tenants and improve equity in cities. And just considerations for whether or not a rent stabilization program is right for any particular locality. So just to begin, next slide. Sorry, I don't know. There we go, thanks. So first, what is rent stabilization? There, you know, a lot of different terms that are used for this. Rent control or rent stabilization are kind of loose terms used to cover a spectrum of regulations. They generally limit how much landlords can raise rent each year while still allowing for modest increases tied to inflation or costs. That's kind of the more modern rent stabilization policies. These evolved from kind of stricter rent control, the original policies, which really were implemented around during World War II. There were, there were earlier policies as well, but this is when the, like, the, the major ones that most people know of came about. Those froze rents entirely, and those were much stricter. But modern rent stabilization kind of has evolved from that to become a more flexible program, usually includes caps on annual rent increases, along with rules related to vacancy decontrol, meaning what happens when a tenant moves out of a controlled unit, whether or not there are allowances for things like condominium conversions from rental units. I'll talk a little bit about that later and why that's important. And then things like hardship exemptions and exceptions from rent control. And I'll go through all of these. But really, you know, rent stabilization varies widely, varies, varies, it can be very different from city to city, from county to county, state to state. We're even seeing some state level policies. And really, how it's designed really affects outcomes. So we'll talk about that. Next slide. So the current state of rent stabilization, as of 2022, that's when we have our most recent complete data from the entire nation. There were over 200 local governments that had a rent stabilization policy in place. And there are seven states in DC that allow localities to enact rent control in their states, while 33 states preempt local rent control, meaning rent control is not allowed in those states at all. And then now, this, this map is a little bit old, but there are now two states that have statewide rent control, which are California and Oregon. And yeah, I won't go too much into the state level rent control, but, but there are, like I mentioned, states that have higher, you know, higher levels of rent control at the state level and then localities within it that can have stricter ones, kind of like what, what happens with the counties, cities within counties in Maryland, like we're seeing. Next slide. Okay, so I'm going to go kind of quickly through previous research on rent control. It's a very popular topic amongst researchers. There's a lot of research on it. So I'm not going to be able to cover it all, but I'm going to do my best to kind of synthesize what's out there. I think that the core theme of it, you'll see, is that there's a lot of variation in findings. And I think this really points to how policies differ from city to city. So you can study it in one city and find something completely different from another city, and not just because of the policy design, but also because of the housing market that it's implemented in, right? And how, how it is enforced is something that's really important that I think isn't thought about enough. And it can be quite expensive, so something to consider. Uh, next slide. Okay, so my, my synthesis of, of the rent control literature is that generally, rent stabilization is almost always found to decrease rents for tenants in controlled units, as it's designed to do, right? Research fairly consistently finds that, you know, the people living in stabilized units do benefit from these reduced rents. It can protect tenants in gentrifying neighborhoods from displacement and may improve mobility outcomes for children raised in rent-stabilized units. Next slide. However, there are some studies, and these findings are mixed as well, suggesting that the benefits that rent, the tenants who are in rent-controlled units get from rent control may be offset by negative effects in the, in the rest of the market, meaning that, you know, rent control can reduce the overall supply of housing, which can negatively affect whether or not housing exists, but then also prices for people who aren't in those rent-stabilized units. So we have to think about some of those unintended consequences that can occur. So it's not, you know, a lot of, a lot of times, people say, okay, well, we'll just exempt new construction from... Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted, those studies, were they done in? Because it seems like some of the areas, I guess, what I was thinking about, whether there are specific buildings that have rent stabilization, but I guess even things that are broad-based rent stabilization policies generally have some exemptions. So there's always going to be some units that have rent control or rent stabilization and others that don't. Is that...
I mean, there could be a scenario in which everything is rent-controlled, but that, that still means that there could still be buildings that would have been built otherwise, or units that would be there otherwise in the city. So tenants who'd want to move into your city who can't because there isn't enough supply. So that is one thing we've heard is, well, let's just stabilize everything and then the other tenants. But there might just not even be tenants. There might not be housing at all, you know, available for those folks. And, you know, this happens through two main, two main venues. One is through if new buildings are subject to rent stabilization, even if it's, you know, 10, 15 years down the line, that could still reduce developers' likelihood of developing in your city. So it could reduce new supply. And then, but what has been found in some places is that a big impact on supply is through condominium conversion. So people who are current landlords of rental buildings will convert to condos, because condos are generally exempt from, you know, they're not rented. So, so I'll talk about some ways that cities have tried to put in additional layers of condo regulations in order to account for that. But I think it is something to keep in mind, is that, you know, you're making developing rental housing less profitable for developers. So there's likely to be some negative impact there on rental supply. Uh, but then there are other studies that find no, no significant effect or mixed effects on the quantity of rental housing stock and construction. So I don't think this always has to be the case, but it is something to be very careful in your design about, to make sure that you're not negatively affecting that overall supply. Because we have, you know, an overall supply crisis in our country. So, you know, we don't want to be, you know, we need to help people who need affordable housing right now, but also we need to address that underlying supply, and we don't want to make that worse in the long run. So it's important to kind of balance all those short and long-term needs and needs of people at different income levels. Next slide. Rent stabilization has also been shown to have mixed impacts on economic mobility and unemployment. So, you know, it can improve economic mobility, meaning people's ability to get better jobs, more money for those who receive it, but it can also create negative effects for those that do not. Same, same idea for people that aren't lucky enough to be in those stabilized units. And there's a really new paper out in New York City showing that rent stabilization there actually increases tenants' probability of unemployment. Maybe partially, they're not exactly sure what the mechanisms are, but it could be partially because tenants are less likely to move closer to a job, right, closer to a job or a better job, because they don't want to give up their stabilized unit. Next slide. You know, critics also question whether the benefits of rent stabilization reach people who need it most, right? It's not means-tested, meaning that anyone can be in a stabilized unit. And so, you know, it's just something to keep in mind as you're considering various housing policies to address our housing need. There could be very high-income people living in rent-stabilized units benefiting from those lower, lower rents. And, you know, if, if there is this potentially negative impact on people not in stabilized units, you know, you could be even increasing inequities more if, if it's not being targeted to the right people. On the other hand, you know, we've interviewed tenant advocates and other researchers who believe that its broad application, meaning anyone can get into these units, is actually essential to its strengths, because they see housing as a human right for everyone, and that they believe that that's actually a good, good thing about it, that it's not means-tested. Uh, next slide. There's also some evidence that in some cases, rent stabilization can lead to quality deterioration of rental, rental buildings, right? If, if landlords aren't making as much money through rent, they might not invest in keeping, maintaining the building as well. However, like, like I said there, I'll talk about policies, pass-throughs, things like that, that many cities and counties adopt in order to not discourage maintenance and upkeep. But those also have to be balanced carefully so that you're not making it too easy for landlords to make minor repairs and then get out of being stabilized, you know? So we'll talk about that in a moment as well. Uh, next slide. There are components of rent stabilization that may also encourage landlords to evict tenants, right? So I think this is something to keep in mind, particularly in Maryland, where you can't have just-cause eviction laws, right? Or at least, there's some uncertainty about that. The, namely, we'll talk about it more in detail later, but vacancy decontrol, which I mentioned, which is vacancy decontrol means that the unit becomes uncontrolled when a tenant leaves and a new tenant moves in. And this is very common. Many cities, counties, states have this vacancy decontrol in place to kind of help, help landlords and developers be able to, like, you know, not be, not be too far behind, too far below on rent. However, what it can do is incentivize landlords to try to get rid of tenants so that they can pop up the rent-to-market rate, right? So to be really careful with those laws. And, and there are ways, there are a lot of new ways that, that cities and counties are, are designing rent stabilization to try to kind of at least get a middle ground, because it does cost landlords a lot of money when tenants turn over, or you have to repair the place, do all of the move-out upgrades. And so there is an argument for allowing some level increase above the controlled rent, but allowing it to pop all the way up to market rate, especially in a state that does not allow just-cause eviction laws, could actually, you know, increase eviction and harm tenants more. And there, studies have shown that cities with vacancy control, where rent stabilization remains in place after a tenant is replaced, have experienced an increase in their share of Black and Latinx renters and were generally more affordable to low-income households. So there are some potential benefits there to requiring control when a tenant moves out. Next slide. We conducted a study across cities, trying to get at this issue of, you know, if you look at one city to the next, you can get different outcomes because of markets and, and policy design. So we were trying to look across all of the cities that we could find that had reformed and either enacted or gotten rid of or changed their rent control regulation over a couple-decade period to see, on average, what kind of effect these policies have on housing, supply, and rents. And we found that rent stabilization, on average, does reduce the overall supply of housing by about 10%. So it's something to keep in mind. There could be a reduction in overall supply. But we did find that it increased the number of units affordable to extremely low-income households, which is kind of amazing, because that's really hard to do without deep subsidies, right? So I think, you know, I think that the moral of the story, there's pros and cons, really, design matters. And so, you know, if you are considering this, it's important to think about all of these different outcomes that are possible. Next slide. Okay, so we've done some, some research, kind of looking at, you know, policy design, best practices, implementation. I'll say there's no one right or wrong answer. At least, we don't know it yet from the research. But there are some best practices and things to keep in mind, again, when you're deciding whether or not to enact a more stringent rent control than the county has. And then if you do, really thinking about how you're going to bundle these different policy components together to get to whatever your core goals are. Next slide. So the major rent stabilization policy components that are going to affect your outcomes and that you'd really need to think through are, first of all, the permitted rent increases. That's the basics, right? So how much rent is allowed to increase? Usually, usually places select some sort of CPI-linked measure plus a margin. So CPI plus 2%, CPI plus 5% to allow for those fluctuations in, in inflation. And then a lot of times, I'll talk about this in a minute, but people put a cap on that. So CPI plus 2% up to 10% or whatever it might be, so that it doesn't, in years of really high inflation, that it doesn't go crazy. The second major rent stabilization policy component is what types of housing are, you're going to choose to have covered under it? Is it going to be based on building age? Some places do that. Property size or ownership size? So a lot of cities and counties don't require smaller buildings to be stabilized. But what can happen is, and this is what, like, economists think about a lot, what incentives you're creating, right? So that could just incentivize these big developers to buy a bunch of little properties, which maybe not what you want. And so instead, some places are moving more towards not small properties, but small landlords. So landlords that own X number or fewer number of units rather than the size of the actual building. So that can be a way to do that. And I'll, I'll talk about that more in detail later. Unit decontrol, I've already mentioned, is a big thing. So what happens, how units might become unregulated? And one way is when tenants move out. Exceptions, so in certain circumstances, like we're talking about capital improvements, when those are needed to help encourage landlords to maintain their properties. What exceptions will you allow to rent control? Will you allow pass-throughs of certain upgrades, those kinds of things? And then tenant protection. So, you know, a lot of times, you, you're going to want to pass tenant protections, if possible, in combination with rent control. Or if you already have them in place, that's great. But just to ensure that you're not inadvertently causing any harm to tenants through, through these types of incentive structures that are set up. Next slide. Okay, so I'll go a little bit more into detail on permitted rent increases, but we'll go too deep, because there's a lot of different ways of doing this. But like I mentioned, permitted rent increases often include some sort of baseline factor, usually tied to inflation, such as the Consumer Price Index. And then we'd call it escalator, so to account for increases in operating expenses that may increase faster than inflation, such as 3%. There, you know, that's a question. Do operating expenses increase faster than inflation? There is some evidence that that can happen. And so allowing for that can help landlords and developers to kind of keep up with those costs. And then, like I said, there's usually a cap to ensure that the maximum never exceeds a really high rate, such as 6%, 8%, 10%. So, for example, Montgomery County and Prince George's County, their permitted rent increase is CPI plus 3%, not to exceed 6%. And just for reference of your neighbor, Tacoma Parks is just CPI alone, with no escalator. So it's, it's quite a bit lower. Next slide. Okay, so types of housing covered. Like I mentioned, the usual kind of suspects for deciding what types of housing are going to be covered. Under rent stabilization include the building age. So like we talked about, a lot of the older policies completely exempted new construction from rent stabilization because of this fear that if we're, you know, imposing these rent ceilings on new developments, people aren't going to want to come and build in our city, which is possible, and that, that has been shown in some research to be the case. More recently, you're seeing a lot of places do more like a rolling exemption, saying that, that buildings are exempt from rent control for 10, 15, or 20 years, and then those units would come under control. That's kind of a, I think, a, a way of compromising and trying to get that, those new buildings eventually controlled, because otherwise your controlled stock just, just dwindles over time. But at the same time, you know, we have seen and have heard that even those rolling exemptions, if you're ever going to be stabilized, that that does, it does harm the, the bottom line for developers and so can affect development. So something to keep in mind there. Affordability covenants, most localities exempt units with affordability covenants from rent control. You know, they often already have rents that are set, so maybe don't have to worry about that as much, but that is a debate in some places as well. Like I mentioned, size of the property. A lot of places exempt buildings with four or fewer units or single-family homes, ADUs, duplexes, where one of the units is occupied by the owner. You know, there are arguments both ways for this, right? It's like, well, just because a landlord is small doesn't necessarily mean that they're better or aren't going to raise rents a lot, you know? So I think there's, there's an analogy in a, in a housing textbook era that said something about, you know, the amount of, you know, certifications you have to get to become like a nail technician, yet like anyone can become a landlord. And then we're going to let, like, small landlords out of what we consider to be like a human, you know? I mean, this is something to think about. Do you want to exempt those small, small landlords, those small property owners, or not? Or do you want to keep those? And that's, I think that's more of a, a judgment call by the city. But like I said, one, if you are going to do that, a potentially better way than choosing it based on the building size is based on the, the number of properties in a landlord's portfolio. And that, that's the last one there. Next slide. Okay, exceptions. So the Takings Clause of the Fifth Amendment to the US Constitution, you know, jurisdictions to, to comply with that, jurisdictions often adopt policies that ensure that landlords or property owners are guaranteed a fair return, which can be defined in many different ways, right? And that's something that you'll want to define if you do end up creating or adopting your own legislation. Places use a variety of methods for determining this, from guaranteeing a 12% rate of return in DC to examining the net operating income for developers adjusted for inflation over time. So that's just, often what happens is that developers or landlords can, can request a fair-return exception, saying that they're not making a fair return, and then it goes through some sort of review to see if that is the case. And then the other exception is often significant capital improvements and substantial renovations. This is also something that you're going to want to design carefully, right? Because you want to find that balance between encouraging maintenance and upkeep, but not making some, make, giving like a loophole, right? For a landlord to say, well, I'm going to, you know, put in a new kitchen so that I don't have to do rent control. It's like cheaper for me to make that upgrade than it is to, to, to be controlled, have the rent controlled. So that's another really, you know, it's a, it's a thing you're going to want to balance carefully when you design that, that component of the law. Uh, next slide. Okay, unit decontrol. I've mentioned this a few times, because I think it's a really important one. But so, again, this is when a tenant moves out. What, what happens to the rent when a tenant moves out? Now, some places say it doesn't matter who's living there. The rent stabilization stays with the unit. So whether someone moves in or out, the rent has, is only allowed to increase at that, at that allowable cap, according to the law. But many places allow rents to pop all the way up to market level when a tenant moves out. Others have taken on a partial decontrol approach, where landlords can increase rent beyond the allowable increase to some extent, but not all the way up to full market rent. And that, you know, can, like I said, allow for these additional costs that happen when units turn over, but may not incentivize that, like, eviction. And even in places with just-cause evictions, there are many informal ways to get rid of tenants, right? We talked to one landlord who said, well, I only, I only choose tenants who I know are mobile, students, people who are going to be moving quickly, things like that. So you can, one, select, you know, that, that might mean that families are going to have a harder time finding units. Or, or, and then, you know, there, there are other ways of just making someone unhappy, so they want to leave on their own, right? So you're not really evicting them, but they're, you know, the landlord is finding ways to get rid of folks. So, you know, you want to keep that in mind and design this unit decontrol in a way that doesn't incentivize that. Okay, next slide. Rent banking is also a newer kind of component of that that we've been seeing. This allows landlords to, so rather than, you know, allowing rent to pop up when a tenant moves out, this allows landlords to kind of not go to that allow, charge less than the full increase in specific years and bank up those increases for years when they might need it, right? and bank up those increases for years when they might need it, right? So say they have a tenant they really like, that their their costs aren't rising as quickly as the allowable increase. They say, okay, I'm going to only raise your rent X percent next year, which is 1% less than what's allowable. I'm going to bank that 1%. And then in the future, when if costs do go up a lot or if something happens, I can pop it, I can increase the rent beyond what's allowable according to that banking. Or say a tenant moves out and I want to use that banked rent. So this can improve housing stability by discouraging frequent rent hikes. Um, and it can help landlords manage operating cost spikes. But it could result in large unpredictable rent increases when those those uh, those allowable increases are banked and if they're all used at once. So sometimes there's often often a cap on that as well, like you can bank up to 5% or 10%. Next slide. Like I mentioned, you know, um, studies have shown that rent stabilization policies policies can encourage landlords and property owners to convert their properties to condos, rental rental properties to condos, which, you know, takes much-needed rental units off the market and can harm rental prices. So um, uh, in response, a lot of jurisdictions have placed limitations on the number of units that can be converted to condos. So for example, San Francisco limits condominium conversions to 250 annually. Mountain View, California prevents conversions until the city has a certain number of apartments in the housing stock. Cambridge requires conversion applications to be submitted three years ahead of time. Um, and San Jose, California makes it such that selling a property does not trigger any change in rent control. And demolition is the only way a landlord can remove a property. So um, condo conversions are something to keep in mind because I think, you know, we think a lot about what deterrent effect rent control might have on new development, but we also need to remember that there's a lot of other ways to take current rental units off the market and track those and monitor them and make sure that that's not happening either. Next slide. Okay, and tenant protections, you know, um, to provide additional accountability for landlords or property managers who are not operating in good faith. Many jurisdictions uh, enact additional tenant protections, either just for tenants and rent-controlled units or all tenants. It can be either way. It can be in the rent control, rent stabilization policy. It can be separate. Whatever it is, just to ensure that those protections are in place, to ensure that these incentives that can be created through rent control are not harming folks. Common tenant protections that are enacted include anti-retaliation or harassment clauses. Just cause eviction, we've already talked about that. Um, and right to appeal exceptions and exemptions. So um, making sure that people have a a way and a clear way and know about their rights to appeal. Next slide. So I think a big, a big thing that jurisdictions realize after they implement rent stabilization is that it costs a lot to to implement it, right? To to manage it, to run it. You generally need a um, rental registry, which can be a big cost upfront, but can actually be really beneficial for things well beyond rent stabilization, right? It can be great for code enforcement. It can be great for, you know, just being able to track and coordinate across all of the different, you know, health department, anything else that's needed. But I think that, you know, there's a spectrum of um, enforcement from being very proactively enforced um, rent control where rent stabilization, sorry, I'm using the terms interchangeably, where say um, a jurisdiction knows everyone's rents, tracks them and says, hey, you can only increase your rent by this much. You know, has a lot of data and is really like spending a lot of time and money enforcing it. To places that just don't really do a lot of enforcement, they they, you know, they have the law. People may or may not be following it. And, you know, you risk in those situations that one, tenants might not know their rights in the first place. Or two, even if they know their rights, they might be afraid of retaliation and might not be willing to to talk to their landlord about it. So I think the more close you can be to proactive enforcement, the more you're going to be able to really help the the tenants who are most vulnerable or at risk. However, it can be very expensive, right? So um, there are cities who have, you know, 12 full-time staff just to administer their rent stabilization policy. So it's just just something to consider again as you're you're thinking about the different suite of housing policies that could be enacted to help address our housing crisis, you know, thinking about those costs and comparing them across them. I think it's something, yeah.
Yeah, so I was wondering uh, this concept of uh, proactive enforcement and thinking about some of our neighboring jurisdictions, places all over the country. Do most cities that have uh, rent control have uh, housing authorities? And we'll take Tacoma Park for instance. I'm not sure how many people they have in the code enforcement. And I believe they do have a housing authority.
I think so. That's actually, I'm not, yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, it it doesn't usually go through the housing authority, um, from what I understand. But locality has set it up in many different ways. So um, sometimes cities will create their own entire department just for rent stabilization. Sometimes it will go within another department. I think honestly, it would make sense to be kind of close to code because then you could have data systems that work across both. And you could be, you know, tracking and monitoring the um, the quality of the buildings. But yeah, there's a wide variety of the way of ways in which uh, cities set this up, look, cities and states set this up. And the cost can vary too a lot. And it it um, also depends on how much um, effort is put into education as well. So not just enforcement, but educating tenants and landlords about what the allowable increases are and um, and what their rights are. And again, it's like how this all fits together is really important because if you have a really simple rent control. So say someplace theoretically had like a, you're only allowed to increase rent by 5%. It's not tied to inflation. It's a really simple equation. That's a pretty simple thing for people to understand and be able to kind of know their rights and fight for it. But in reality, you know, these regulations tend to be a bit more complicated than that to account for all of the things that we've talked about, right? So sometimes it's hard to know how much your landlord is allowed to increase your rent. You know, it's hard to calculate that, you know, what was CPI this year? Which CPI are they using? You know, that kind of thing. But you know, do they have banked rent? I don't know, uh, all that kind of stuff. So I think, you know, your level of proactivity and and education and enforcement is going to be dependent upon how complex the rest of the design of the policy is as well. But you know, you definitely want to ensure that it's it's being enforced, right? There, I think there was a, I think it was a Washington Post article with landlords like openly saying like, no one, no one enforces that. You don't have to follow it kind of thing. And so uh, you know, you can sometimes get some of the negative impacts of these policies without the positives if it's not being enforced properly. So it's something really important to think about. Yes.
Well, I'm wondering, you know that uh, Greenbelt originally was owned by the government and it was all rental. It was a rental community, but designed for really for people of lesser means. But it would be interesting if we knew how much the rent increased from the beginning of when it opened up till 1952 when they divested from the city.
There are pretty good historical.
Does anybody know that information?
Well, when, um, what year was it that you'd want the base year to be? I could look and see, like from when until 1952?
Well, from 1937 and then until 1952.
I can look up to see whether that's possible. There's been, you know, there are census records going back there and there's been some people who have been doing a lot of digitization of the records. You might be able to.
And then I have another question. Are there are there places where rent is uh, calculated based on what the average income of the population is?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's kind of more how your traditional subsidies would work. So low-income housing tax credit, you know, housing choice vouchers. But I don't think anyone does that for rent controls.
Well, I think because our basic problem, you know, is not, you know, how much the rent, well, problem is how much the rent increases. But the the problem is is we, our society makes everything about making money. Housing is is has just been turned into a commodity. That's the basic problem.
Yep.
And you talk about, you know, building more and more rentals, but in my opinion, in Greenbelt, we have too many rentals. We have, you know, three thou- almost 3,000 apartments at Franklin Park. I think if half of those were uh, you know, for sale units, uh, it would be a a better community. Because yeah, maybe the, you know, the rental part might be less expensive and all that. But I think the basic thing is that, you know, why are we making housing a commodity in our society?
No, that's a good question.
Unless we can tackle that problem, I think all, because you're rattling off all these facts and figures about you can do this and that and the other thing. But it, none of it really seems to be getting at the basic problem that we have.
The root cause. I think, yeah, the commodification of housing certainly is something that needs to be addressed. And there are ways that places are trying to address that. You know, through various tax policies and, you know.
Because if you're not really looking at how much the population makes and how much everyone can afford to pay for housing, you know, what good is it? Because when I was a young kid and I moved into my first apartment, I probably spent a quarter of my income on housing. Now that I'm living in a co-op, I'm spending about three quarters of my income.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, that's great. I mean, you know, this, yeah, I mean, it's the commodification of housing, extreme income inequality. People would also argue causes how high prices because people with really high incomes are pushing up prices. But I mean, there's also just, it's really expensive to build housing and I think there's a lot of reasons for that. So even your nonprofit developers who are trying to build affordable housing, it's it's extremely expensive. And, you know, this is kind of another topic, but really briefly, you know, the, I think there's a lot of factors that go into that, but one of them is that we have stuck such restrictive building codes that have not allowed innovation to occur in construction. And so while manufacturing productivity increased ninefold between 1970 and 2020, I think, housing innovation and productivity declined by 1% every year on average. So we actually are making housing more expensive to build. And so I think, I mean, so there's definitely the commodification of housing issue.
Depends on where you're at. I mean, if you look in, part of the problem I think is we're trying to cram everybody into our coast. West coast, the east coast, the ma- the majority of the population is getting crammed in there. But if you go into the interior or you go to the more rural places, there's plenty of affordable housing. And a lot, a lot of places have good jobs that they're trying to fill and they don't have people to fill those jobs. But they have a lot cheaper housing. So I think part of the problem is we're trying to cram too many people into one space because you can only build so much into a space and still have any quality of life. Because that should be the the basic, the baseline. We all want to live in a a way that provides us with a quality of life. If we all just have to cram into a 400-square-foot apartment, we're not going to be real happy. I don't think.
I'd like to kind of wrap up the policy design in consideration and then kind of move to the regional context.
Sure.
So that's about where we are.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so sorry if you can go down two slides. I don't actually know who's controlling it. Thank you to whoever. Great, okay. So this is just a quick overview, very simplistic, sorry, it's a lot of words and it's a little small. Overview of the jurisdictions in this region, some of them that have a rent stabilization, just to give you a sense of the various ways that your neighbors are designing um, rent stabilization. So Montgomery County, their permitted rent increase, like I mentioned, is CPI U plus 3% with a cap of 6%. The exemptions include a 23-year new construction exemption. So new construction is exempt for 23 years, after which time it will become rent stabilized. Um, accessory apartments are exempted, duplexes where one unit is owner-occupied, people with two or fewer rental units, so really small landlords, and then um, a unit subject to an affordability regulatory agreement. So such as Lytech, other other types of subsidized units. For de-control, uh, landlords are allowed to bank rent increases up to 10% and apply them to new leases. And for exceptions, there's a fair return exception, significant capital improvements exception, and substantial renovations exception. Tenant protections, they have an anti-harassment clause, but like we said, no um, just cause eviction. Prince George's County, um, very similar, except for that their exemptions are anything built after 1999. Duplexes, health facilities, et cetera, accessory apartments, units with an affordability agreement, people with five or fewer rental units in the county. Co-ops, county residence condo, um, I'm not quite sure what I meant by that. And then for unit de-control, same, they're allowed to bank rent. The exceptions also include fair return, significant capital improvement, substantial renovations, pretty similar. DCs, on the other hand, so their permitted rent increases are CPI W plus 2%. W and U are pretty close uh, together. They're just slightly different ways of calculating inflation. Their exceptions include people with four or fewer rental units, buildings built after 1975, so their stock is dwindling over time. But they aren't going to have this negative impact on new construction, potential negative impact. And then federally or district subsidized affordable housing, they have partial de-control, vacancy de-control. Um, and similarly, they have fair return, significant capital improvement, substantial renovation, same exceptions. They have right to appeal tenant protections. Um, and then Tacoma Park has one of the more restrictive rent regulations. Actually, in the nation, um, their allowable increase is just CPI U, um, no um, allowable increase above that. They exempt new units for five years. Single-family houses, accessory apartments, duplexes with one unit owner-occupied, units occupied by tenants with a tenant-based rental assistance and rental developments where at least half of the units are income restricted. They also have partial vacancy de-control, fair return exceptions, right to appeal and anti-harassment clause. So um, you know, so these policy designs, yeah, can can vary greatly even within the same region. And you know, like I said, it's all like this balancing act. You're really going to want to think about how you design it in terms of how stringent is to affect the overall market versus how it can benefit tenants in those units. Uh, next slide, please. And then one more. Thank you. So yes, I think, you know, it's it's all a balancing act, right? You need to really make sure that, one, rent stabilization is really not an affordability policy, right? Because if your rents aren't already affordable, it's not going to make them affordable. It's just going to stop the rate at which they increase. So maybe someday they'll be affordable, there'll be some units that are affordable. So it's not going to solve our housing crisis, but it could be one tool that could be, if if designed well, can help ensure that tenants have a little bit more um, security in their rents. You know, I like to think of it as, if you're a homeowner, um, generally your mortgage, you know how much you're paying in rent or in your mortgage every month, tenants should, you know, maybe should have that same basic right as well. But too stringent of rules can reduce the supply of rental units overall and further harm low-income renters. But too weak of regulations can fail to keep low-income renters from being displaced while creating uncertainty in the market for landlords. So um, yeah, I will pause there and take questions.
Well, well, thank you. That that is a uh, pretty thorough overview of uh, rent stabilization historically, more recent trends. So uh, that that concept of balancing act pieces is uh, difficult to uh, wrap one's head around when it comes to thinking about a city, a small city like Greenbelt, 25,000 people. Our housing stock is, we're a relatively young city, 1937. That's not very old. But I would venture to speculate that a lot of the apartment units uh, in Greenbelt were built in the eighties and seventies. Franklin Park was built in the uh, sixties, seventies, and eighties. So a lot of those units are getting a little bit older. So aspirationally, one thing that Greenbelt has promoted over time is just uh, home ownership and trying to find ways to kind of move, allow people to move from apartments to home ownership because traditionally, home ownership has been uh, less expensive and more predictable. So given that we have a fair number of units, you know, looking down the road 10, 20 years, we we also want to uh, create incentives for landlords to to upgrade and to improve the property so that uh, so that our housing stock is more sustainable. So you know, putting in uh, windows, new windows and upgrading. So, you know, putting in windows, new windows, and upgrading heating and HVAC systems so that they are energy efficient. Solar panels and things like that are really, really important to us. So it's a real balancing act. So with that thing about homeownership, you mentioned a few other communities across the country. I think you mentioned Cambridge and Mountain View, California. Cambridge, Massachusetts is a couple of cities that have had rent stabilization policies for quite some time. How, how do they balance that, that aspiration between homeownership and attainable apartment units, units for people?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I think, you know, in some ways, if, if homeownership is a goal, and we certainly have a huge dearth of starter homes in our nation, right? In most places. So in some ways, condo conversions could be a good thing, right? If you're trying to create more homeownership options for people. But I really think these are just going to be two different policies. Like, I don't know that you're going to be able to address homeownership goals within a rent stabilization policy. You know, that there, there are lots of other great ways out there of, of supporting homeownership. And just to, to point to one promising new approach, I've noticed more places adopting is first-generation homeownership programs. Which are really cool because it's like first, first-time homebuyer programs, you know, supports like down payment assistance, things like that. Can sometimes get funds into the hands of people who are eventually going to be making a lot of money or might have intergenerational family wealth. But these first-generation programs can really start to break down those, those barriers that some people face to not having anyone in their family ever have owned a home. And these intergenerational wealth gaps that we see persist, especially between various races and ethnicities. So there's a lot of great new homeownership support programs out there, but I don't think rent stabilization is really gonna get you there. You might, it, it would be good to think about how it could affect the homeownership market if you were to design a more stringent policy for your city. But, yeah, I think that's going to be kind of a separate suite of policies. But like I said, rent stabilization is just one of the many tools in the toolkit that can be used to address all of these different housing goals. Yes.
So we'll circle around and council has a lot of questions. After we kind of get through that, we'll take some questions from the public. And I've got more questions, but let's just keep it moving. Mayor Patel.
I guess, thinking about our situation specifically in the sense that Prince George's County has some rent stabilization rules that are in place. We may not think they're perfect, but there is at least something that, that, that is in place. And also thinking about the cost for enforcement if we were to create our own rules. Do any of the studies or any of the experience that you've seen look specifically at these smaller jurisdictions within a larger jurisdiction that has other rules and how efficacious that is? And I'm like, I mean, you have the example of Tacoma Park, but it sounds like Tacoma Park went, I mean, they went really far in terms of only exemptions for five years. I'm not sure they're necessarily the, the, they don't seem to be a typical example in a lot of ways. But I'm thinking, are there, are there, are there any other places in, for example, Montgomery County? Or I, and I feel like, wasn't like Mount Rainier looking at some rent stabilization thing? Or in other states, examples of, like, how, I guess what I'm trying to balance is, since we're not trying to do this in a vacuum. How much is it going to, how much, how important is this for us to be able to have our slightly more stringent rules when there is a larger rent stabilization policy in the county?
Yeah, and Tacoma Park's a unique example because theirs was already in place prior to the counties. Yes, exactly. I am not aware of any other localities that have enacted a, a more stringent rent stabilization policy within a larger county. There are certainly cities that have rent stabilization policy within a state that has. But again, the, I think the cities usually had it first, since the state policies are pretty new. I mean, I think that's a great thing to think about, though. And, you know, one strategy might be kind of waiting and seeing how the county policy plays out, see how happy you are with it. Track and monitor what's happening with rents and displacement and whatever else you'd like to be tracking with that. And then kind of consider if, if it's worth it. Because like you said, it is, it's expensive, right? It's expensive to track and monitor. Is it going to be worth it? Or maybe are there other policy tools that could be used to help address whatever deficiencies you think the county's policy might have? And it, it also takes a lot of political capital to pass a rent stabilization bill, right? So I'm not a political scientist and I've never actually led a city like you all and done all the hard work. But, you know, it, it will take a lot of work to think this through and, and get something like this passed. And so thinking about, is that the best use of the time? I don't know, maybe there's another policy that could be more complimentary to the counties that could be useful. And then again, it also depends on how much infrastructure and of the systems that you would need to enforce it that you already have in place. I don't know whether you already have, for instance, a part of the government where it would fit in nicely, or you already have the data systems that are needed, or, or whatever it might be. So I think that could, you know, would be something you'd probably want to think about, the cost benefit.
And I think we have some of that, but I think from listening to our planning director previously, probably not enough to be, be on that higher end of the, that proactive enforcement without some more staffing.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I, I know Rockville was looking at the rent stabilization about a year, two years ago. And they decided, and of course, they're within Montgomery County. And I'm not sure why, but they, they didn't decide to go through with it. Be interesting to find out exactly what happened there. Councilmember McKinnney, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Please.
I was wondering, in some of the examples that you gave, and I know every jurisdiction is different, but, you know, what is a typical timeline or what are the types of actions that municipalities have to take if they were to go this process? And I know when Councilmember Pompey requested this to be on the agenda, part of the reason why is because it is a very long process. So I'm trying to get an understanding of what that process looks like and timeline.
Yeah, I mean, again, like you said, every place is different. And I think it would depend on, you know, how much engagement you'd want to do around it. I worked with Enterprise to help do the data analysis for Prince George's County's permanent stabilization bill. I'm not sure how long they took from beginning to end of deciding on that. And they had, had already had a temporary one in place, so that might have also kind of like shortened the timeline a bit. But, you know, they did at least a year of study and had a, like advisory board, a community advisory board that was helping to, you know, to, to lead the discussions and the debates around it and the design. So I think, I don't know what the, the quickest it could be is, but I think if you're gonna, you know, do it right and take the time to design it, you probably also want to commission a study and, like we said, to talk about what bundle would work best for you. And trying to predict and plan for implementation and costs and that kind of thing. So then, once, once you do all that, design it and pass it, it still takes a year or two to get ready to actually implement it, right? So build up the stack, get the systems in place, and figure it all out. So it can take, it can take a while. So I guess that's the con of like waiting and see how the counties goes. Definitely, it, it could be a while. But would also, you might also have better data on what those costs look like in this region, which could be helpful. You know, how many staff you might need, all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, I'm just sorry, I don't have a great answer, but.
That's, thank you.
Ms. Pope, were you there? Did you have any questions about the presentation?
I, I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate all the information. And I'm sorry, I tried to make some notes, but my eyes are not very good tonight, so they're worse than normal. But I do appreciate you mentioning, you know, I mean, our supply of housing is very limited in Greenbelt. And, and maintenance upkeep is a big issue. I know that one of our largest apartment complexes, they are, well, they, they begun, they began with exchanging windows, you know, for about twenty-eight hundred apartments, which is a large undertaking. And, and it costs, you know, a few million dollars. And, and, and so I understand that we want to try to keep our residents, renters safe. And, and make sure they pay adequate rent and not too much, I understand that. But we also have to, I think, keep an open dialogue with, with the, the apartment complex owners and management companies as well, because there has to be a fair solution to everything, especially if it comes up to upkeep. You know, we want to make sure people have a nice and safe place to live. In the same token, we want to make sure we don't cap them so much that they're not going to be able to afford any upgrades or upkeep of, of those apartments. We had one situation here where the apartments were not upkeep and there was a bad landlord. It was a serious issue here in, in the city. And of course, we don't want to attract that as well. We want to attract, you know, good companies who took care, take care of their apartments. But we don't want to punish them for also being here providing apartments and then say, well, but you can't do this and this, you cannot do this and this. But on the other side, on, on the other side, if there's something goes wrong, you must fix it. Okay, I only have one, I have one rental unit, one, my retirement home across the street. And just for me to replace an air conditioning unit in a three-bedroom condo, it cost me seven thousand dollars. I've never, I've never raised my, I've never raised the rent three percent, four percent, never. I've never done that. And I usually have local people living in, in, in my condo. But still, you know, you have to come up with the money to do certain renovations and pay the utility fees and pay condo fees and, and, and. So I'm just afraid that we're, that we're going down a road where it says, like you said before, and you mentioned it, that we're, we're seeming business unfriendly and we don't want, we don't want developers to come and, and provide housing. So I, I, I'm, I'm a little worried that we're going down that road. And we also have, like it was said, you know, Prince George's County has rules and laws in, in place. So, you know, I'm, I'm, in a way, I can see why Ms. Pompey wants to put this on the agenda and talk about it, and that's good. We should. But I also feel like, I think there's more to come and maybe more, more to look at towards the county and see if we can just follow the county rules and laws and legislations in this instance. But I do appreciate your report, I really do, because you, you, you mentioned a lot of things that were on my mind, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good, of course, glad I was helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. I have another question, maybe just about the big picture with the housing stock. And Ms. Pope was bringing up some points about incentives, trying to create an environment where the current owners of property, apartment developments, multifamily apartment developments will, you know, maintain and, and upgrade their, their property. So it's energy efficient, it's more sustainable and resilient. And also just, you know, the quality of life for the people that are, that are living there is very important. So, and Mr. Roberts, over time, has, you know, talked about the balance between homeownership and apartments. So just trying to figure out the right kind of incentives and how rent stabilization. You mentioned that in some cases, it seems to reduce the available housing supply by five or ten percent, I think, is what you said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, available rental, rental stock, yes.
So it, it's, you know, we're, we're just looking at the available housing stock in the city and taking the, the regional perspective. You know, COG, the Midtown Washington Council of Governments has done a lot of work on housing affordability and attainability. But also just in looking at the available, affordable, attainable housing stock in the region. And they kind of worked out the fact that we have a big shortage, huge shortage, in the next five years. Now, that may have changed with the current economic environment and the shifts of employment with federal workers. But I, I was just looking at this dashboard that COG has. Sort of indicates that new housing stocks, stocks starts have dropped a whole lot over the past four or five years, actually the past two years. It's plummeted almost. So how, how do we balance all that out? If we, if we, we've got this amazing diversity of housing stock. We've got apartments, we have townhouses, we have garden-style condominiums, we have our cooperative, we have single-family homes. And that's something that, that blend of housing is something that's pretty unique. You don't find that in many places. At the same time, we've got this legacy of affordability, and affordability is a great thing in Greenbelt, we're proud of it. We're a mixed-income community. So how do we maintain that? How do we set up incentives so that people are not priced out of the market? But we're, we're not an island. And still, you know, we are one of the most affordable places in the entire region to live. So how do we balance all this?
Gosh, yeah. I mean, that, that's tough. It's hard when there's pressures coming from all sides. And I mean, I know, I know we've talked about, just touching on one, one point about homeownership. Of course, homeownership is great for wealth building. But there are a lot of households that, homeownership is also expensive, like we talked about, right? Getting your AC fixed or whatever, things might pop up. There are a lot of families who homeownership is not the right choice for, right? And so we need those affordable rental units. And I think your, to your question of how do you balance all of this? And how do you maintain the great diversity that you have here, which is also great for your economy, right? We need people with lower incomes, we need people with higher incomes, we need all the different, different income levels to have teachers in our schools and police officers and, and all of the community members that we need to have vibrant communities. I mean, I think it really has to be a suite of policies, not no one single policy or program is gonna, is gonna create or is gonna help to maintain. Well, you're already starting from a great place because you already have a lot of it, which is great. A lot of places are starting from very little affordability and needing to build up from that. So that, that's a good starting point already. But I like to think of it as, I should have had this hidden slide as an extra one, but as like, I have a graph where on the, the Y-axis is time, right? So now and into the future. And then the X-axis is the supply of units affordable to people at different income levels. And, and within the graph is all the different policies and what we know from the research about how they affect the supply in the short and long run across those income levels. And really what we need is policies that, and, and subsidies and incentives and whatever else we need to ensure that we have that full spectrum of housing across incomes. Because, you know, thirty percent, Lytec is great at creating sixty percent affordable, right? It's not great at creating really, really deeply affordable housing. Rent control, you know, might be great at holding rents where they are right now, but it could harm total supply in the long run. So it might harm, you know, there, there's, you need to address both the immediate needs and the needs across the income spectrum. And I think the more that you can have that suite of policies, I know that you only have so much in your control, right? You don't have zoning abilities, that's another big tool that can be used. But for whatever you can do, like being able to try to create policies that make sure that, okay, so what do we have that's helping with that, deeply affordable? What do we have that's helping with that middle income, the housing, both rental and owner occupied? And then what do we have that's ensuring that there's new stock coming in? Because there is new good research showing that when new housing supply comes in, it does, it can pretty quickly reach households with lower incomes. Because in a lot of places that are so constrained, like our region, there are people who are living in units that they would be willing to pay more for a nicer unit, but it just doesn't exist. And so when that nicer unit opens up, they move into it and their unit then opens up. And there's a shuffling, a move chain, they call it, that can quickly move towards people with lower incomes and in lower-income neighborhoods. So I think like, it's just important to balance all these things. You know, it's, it's, it's hard when people are suffering right now, right? We want, we need to address needs right now. And there are lots of great, you know, emergency rental assistance. I always say cash transfers are housing policy, right? Like, that, that's a great way to get people, money to people who need it quickly and in a way that, you know, preserves dignity and all the other things that, that are great about cash transfers. And, and often doesn't require a lot of overhead, like rent control would, right? But I'm not saying rent control is not the right answer. Just saying like, you know, having that suite and really like taking a step back and looking at your whole suite of policies. What do you already have? What are all other tools in the, in the tool belt that can hit those like missing points? And I think that would hopefully in the, you know, help you preserve those goals, both in the short run and in the long run.
Could you share that research that you mentioned?
Sure, the, the slide. Sure, the the slide I have, it's just, actually, it's just the slide I made when I presented to the COG recently. So it's not like fully published or anything, but I can definitely share that.
Well, on that end, but you were also messaging the research about the housing supply and, um. Cause I found some articles, but it sounds like this might be more more recent, that how housing supply can reduce costs for.
Oh, yes, sure, yeah, the supply team. Oh, yeah, 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 no, definitely. That's, yeah, mast. I can share, share that research for sure.
Uh, Councilmember Pope, I mean, uh, Poppy, do you have, uh. You've been kind of quiet here, so do you have a couple of questions or points that you want to emphasize? Do you think we should move on to uh to Councilman Mitchell?
Um, I think we should, let's move on to Councilman Mitchell.
Okay. And why don't you go, why don't you go ahead and uh frame that up in terms of uh. Why you invited him. I I know he's a former council member in the city of Laurel. He's a credible advocate for uh. Housing affordability and they they went through a really, really large discussion. Uh, about rent stabilization in the city of, and I know, Martin, are you there? Councilman?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Yes, yes, no problem, no problem. I appreciate being here, uh, you know, Greenbelt's one of one of my neighbor cities, so absolutely. So I could just just start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Um, it's a pleasure to be here, like, um, Mayor Jordan says. Um, my name is Councilman Martin Mitchell. I'm a former at-large councilman for the city of Laurel. And, you know, I've actually had the pleasure of coming uh before Greenbelt and speaking. I think it was, I was invited by Rick, uh, former councilman Rick Gordon. Um, and so, you know, it's it's a pleasure that you guys are taking up this conversation again. You know, one of the things that I would say is like my my fight with rent stabilization or exploration started back in twenty twenty-two. Um, and, you know, as Mayor Jordan had mentioned, you know, we we had a conversation about rent stabilization. Just to talk about the context, because there's some people, you know, who weren't here, there's some new council members, some new people in the audience. There was a property, um, three, three, two, eleven street. And, you know, I'll never forget that one, that that, you know, that 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 street, next street address. And there was a ten senior residents who were gonna have their rent. I wanna say it was like, not even doubled. It was like three times, like increased like three times, an increase. And this increase was gonna come around around Christmas time. Of course, you know, COVID was still, um, COVID was still happening, and so this was a surprise to a lot of people. Um, you know, through that conversation, you know, we found out that the landlord had given them, you know, thirty days to make a decision on if they were gonna. Accept the increase or they or they were not, and and, you know, I was actually reached out by, um, I believe he's still a Greenbelt resident, Trent Lierman. Trent Lierman reached out to me and said, hey, there's some seniors that are experiencing this issue. You know, CASA is, um, you know, already already trying to address it, but. It'll be helpful if we had, you know, some elected officials who would hear out the situation. And so, you know, I came, I think I invited some of my other colleagues. Um, and I ended there was somebody from the Noga's office. What we, you know, what we came to find out was, you know, that. It wasn't just this building that was experiencing, you know, some higher than, you know, average rent increases, but it was a lot of places throughout the city. Uh, some of which have had this, you know, the same landlord. Um, and. One of the things that, you know, I came up with, and I remember having a conversation with my colleague, was he he said, um. You know, we can give them the ARPA money because our suggestion was to help them, you know, help the landlord be made whole, but also help them out by. You know, we had millions and millions from the federal government coming uh by ways of ARPA. And so we, you know, my suggestion was, hey, you know, let's utilize some of that money, so, you know, we can give to the landlord, but we can also. You know, make sure that, you know, they stay in their homes. You know, long story short, they agree, like, this is a good idea, but what are we gonna do in the long term? And so one of the things that I suggested was, hey, how about we come up with, uh, you know, a bill, rent stabilization bill? Um, throughout that time of discussing the bill, we also discussed a lot of different tenant protections. Um, but that that main bill was called the Anti-Homlessness and Displacement Act of twenty twenty-two. And the initial tenements were no increase more than three percent, you know, full vacancy decontrol. As mentioned earlier, the establishment of a rental registry, uh, the rental registry was very important. And, um, you know, we weren't doing this on landlords, or we weren't proposing this for landlords that were small landlords, because. Um, you know, as you probably know, small landlords, they, you know, they weren't corporate landlords. And so we were looking at them like anybody would, I think she said, more than four, that was the same context we were looking at it in. I would say that when it came to Laurel, it was very interesting, because it was one of the first like cities, like in the county to take it up. Um, the rent stabilization conversation. So we were joined by many lobbyists. You know, I I became very familiar with lobbyists from A O B and, you know, other, um, you know, real estate organizations. Uh, entities, and, you know, I can say that one of the things, I didn't just shut off the conversation. Even though, you know, I wanna explore more tenant protection, you know, I made sure to, you know, hear every lobbyist. Some of some of which we had, you know, official meetings and took notes and, you know, very detailed and asking questions. One of the, that, you know, the the biggest things that, you know, I came to terms with was like, hey, I understand that there's. Some smaller landlords that are, um, you know, that this really wouldn't impact. I understand that there's some landlords who are doing great things, but the thought of, you know, a policy like this, not not the only end all be all. Is that, you know, we should help people understand the rate of change. Because, you know, when I think back to three, three, two, eleven street, you know, I had several seniors who. Were one either left the workforce, um, because they retired and they were on fixed incomes, or one. Or ones who were working on a on a limited time basis, because, you know, they were just getting up there in age. And so for them, you know, the the change was like. Just their whole house crumbling down. They had no idea how they were going to, you know, survive. And so, you know, sadly enough, you know, we weren't able to pass the the city legislation, you know, in time, but we were able to. You know, make sure to help them out for a year. Um, lo and behold, I think the rent stabilization bill had passed at the county level, maybe like six months. After that year had expired, but, you know, one of the things that was disappointing was, you know. This day, there's no, there's there's none of those previous tenants tenants still in that building. And some of those tenants were, you know, there for twenty fifteen years. Some of them were priced out, you know. During that time, I really found a lot of, um, a lot of things that could be worked on. You know, I remember working with Mary Lehman in the state of Maryland to find out that in the state of Maryland, handshake lease agreements are legal. Right? And so what that means is like, hey, you know, I can have written documentation, but it's not necessarily necessary. You know, handshake lease agreements are, um, you know, honored. And, you know, so that's one of the things we found out, that's the state of Maryland, we posed that question. And, you know, one of the things we also found out, I was on the the rent stabilization task force for the county. And so we talked to, you know, a lot of landlords, small, big, multifamily units, you know, all all types of, all types of landlords. And the one aspect, um, you know, the one aspect that, you know, I asked them was, a lot of these, you know, changes and upgrades they make. To their property, you know, are these things that are, you know, included in, you know, included in their budget? Or are these things that are written off on their taxes, right? I I understand the revenue basis as a a a cost of doing business. And so, you know, any other landlord, small or large landlord, you know, they obviously. Not to say that they understand every cost that comes with it, but they understand that they're taking on a, you know, a serious responsibility, you know, for housing our residents. And fair and equal housing. And when I, when I look back at that, one of the things that I point out is. There was a report that came from our neighbor Montgomery County, because we we look to our neighbors a lot, right? Regionally, it was a report that came from Montgomery County that showed, you know, they have a troubled properties list. And they have an at-risk properties list. And, you know, one of the, one of the provisions that 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 is in the rent stabilization bill. And they strengthened the provision in two thousand and sixteen with a troubled property law, was the fact that they're gonna have more consumer protection. Meaning that that those landlords are not allowed to, you know, raise rent, right? Cause they have to go through, um, you know, uh, a process where they're applying to raise their rent. They're not able to go through that process unless they have taken the steps to get off the troubled properties list or the at-risk properties list. And so what we saw in one year was a decrease of sixty-nine percent, um, sixty-nine percent of troubled properties. And I think it was fifty fifty-eight percent of at-risk properties, right? And so, I I have the actual numbers here, after fiscal year twenty twenty-five inspection. There are sixty-seven troubled properties comprising two thousand two hundred and sixty-four units, down from the total of ninety-three troubled properties. Containing seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine units in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Additionally, in fiscal year twenty-five, there are, um, there are a total of fifty-five at-risk properties. With two thousand seven hundred and forty units compared to properties with, um, uh, compared to seventy-six properties. With six thousand three hundred and seventy-five in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And so that that that's, that for me, what that also shows was, you know, a great, um, commitment to the landlords. Um, and and, you know, code enforcement to make sure that these properties are, and dwellings are being maintained.
Councilman?
Yes.
Oh, I think, uh, Councilmember Pope has a question. I I didn't mean to to interrupt. Uh, Councilman Pope, did you have a, did you want to?
Not so much a question, but I think that is the reason why we wanna have responsible, um, responsible. Um, rental owner, rental complex owners or managers in our city, right? So we all maybe had our little bit of share of trouble with some with some, um, with some irresponsible, um, companies. Who are taking our renters to the cleaners, right? I mean, we had that in Greenbelt as well. So, and we had a few bad examples where we had to step in and thank you to, uh, it's way summer on our city manager, which which. Really, he dealt with the situation that was really like, not very pretty. Um, but, you know, budget renovations and things like that, you cannot just put in your in your annual budget, right? Because you don't know what's gonna happen. Something can happen, right? And something can break down and you, of course. Uh, our our owners should be, they should be able to cover that. But my example was, and I don't even think I finished that, Franklin Park, and I'm gonna name it now, because it's the largest apartment complex in our in our city, twenty-eight hundred. One of the oldest, one of the biggest on the East Coast, it was at at one point. I lived there, trust me, I. Very, and I'm, and I've been working in that complex for twenty-four years in the school, so, um. There's a lot of things I'm familiar with. Um, you know, the the, I've been complaining about windows and and no, no safety bars on the windows for years since I lived there in nineteen ninety-eight. I mean, it's, you know, it's crazy. As a kid, fell out of the windows, there was no safety, the glass, it wasn't really a window, it was like a glass, a sheet of glass, really. That was your window. So they finally started doing all this. And they started renovating windows and they're doing upgrades and upgrading their units and, you know, and and because, like you said. Or someone said that that people now, you know, if they, um, you know, they they wanna live in a nice, clean environment, right? They wanna have nice kitchen counters, they wanna have this and that. So, but, um, you know, once once the rent, once we started talking about, well. Uh, when the cameras came into place, they have to put cameras everywhere, right? Which is a major undertaking for for those companies, right? Major expense, million of dollars. They said, well, wait a minute, now we're not gonna put new windows in there, because we may have to hold back some funds, right? So, it is a give and take, and and we can't just not take or just not give, but we have to work together and say, okay. Let's sit together and say, what's manageable? What is your expectation? How are you gonna treat our renters? You know, this is our idea, but we gotta come together and come to some kind of consensus that fits for everybody. You cannot just put restrictions on 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 these, on on these complexes and say. Well, you can't do this, and you can't do this, and you can't raise your rent, and you can't do this, and you must do this, and you must do this. That's not right either, right? It has to be a give and take, and we have to come together and talk about it. For a small city, uh, like us, with twenty, about twenty-four thousand people. Uh, and we're, we have constraints on our taxes that we receive from from property taxes. That's our main main income, right? We're gonna have to work with folks. We're gonna have to work with people. Of course, we wanna keep our our residents safe, absolutely, one hundred percent sure. And be assured, I'm also for rent cap. I don't want nobody coming in, I'm gonna raise that money fifteen percent or whatever, whatever comes to their crazy minds, right? That cannot be happening either. But it has to be on consensus, and it has to be in in a manner, in a matter of that we are, we're working together.
Those are really good, uh, really good points, uh, Councilmember Pope.
No, I was gonna say, I agree completely. You know, it should be a consensus. You should definitely continue to have conversations. But from from like, you know, my experience is that I think that it's it's very different. If I come to the conversation saying like, I know in fact that I want to do something, put some type of protections in place. As opposed to having a conversation with the landlord lobby about like, how do we best regulate this industry? Because the truth of the matter is, you know, having these, you know, backroom conversations, the truth of the matter is, the industry does not wanna be regulated in this way. Right? And 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 so I think that that's a reality that we have to accept, especially as legislators. When it comes to, you know, these, when it comes to these discussions and understanding that we can bring all the parties to the table, but we all have to have. Um, we all have to have it in mind that we are going to have increased tenant protection. What that outcome looks like, we're not sure yet. But if we come to the 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 lobby and we come, bring the landlord to the table, and we don't have a. A strong consensus that we do want to do something, like you said, maybe fifteen percent is the the rate in which is acceptable for some people. Um, but, you know, that is a conversation that I would say that the council has to have, because at the end of the day. When it came through my council, the truth of the matter is, my council, they didn't want to, they didn't wanna take action on this, on their own. They wanted to make sure that the county did something, and that and that's great. But all that I know is that, you know, I was voted by the residents to represent that area. And so I've worked with Crystal at the county level. But I still think that there's many protections and things that we can go further on at the city level. You know, I just left, um, a senior citizen's house, you know, who. I I think is one of the people, I don't know if we mentioned, but there's thousands left out from the rent stabilization bill that the county passed. You know, so we did try to of course protect, you know, a lot of different people, but there's thousands of people that are left out, you know, the current, the current. The way it is in its current form.
Councilmember? Yeah, you 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 brought up a lot of, a lot of important points. Uh, one one thing that that I heard you were talking about. Uh, you know, there's some generational issues involved when it comes to, um, housing attainability and affordability in in Greenbelt. Once again, you know, we're really, really proud of the fact that we are a relatively affordable community, but we wanna make sure that when. When our young people are, uh, they've graduated from, uh, high school, maybe they've gone away or stayed. Going to college, we wanna make sure that they are, there are apartments or places that they can find where they can stay in Greenbelt without having to move out of town. And on the the opposite end of the spectrum for for seniors, maybe they've been living in a single family home in Greenbelt. For a long, long time, and maybe they they, uh, you know, when they sell the house, they would prefer to to rent instead of owning. We wanna make sure that people can age in place. So these are very real, uh, challenges, uh, for us to try and meet. Uh, and i- it's not easy. So. The changing, uh, desires of people, I mean, generationally. Uh, homeownership has been a really, really high priority in a lot of people's values and in the way that. A lot of government thinks about what's important, but, uh, at the same time, in Washington DC, we we see. Uh, a lot of young professionals, at least we were seeing a lot of young professionals really preferring apartments. Uh, you know, in Greenbelt, we we have had a few new apartments, uh, Mativa and. Over in Greenbelt Station, uh, the apartments over there are not that old. But, uh, that that balance in the housing stock so that there are, there's something for everything is is really hard to get to. Uh, Mayor Protam, uh, and, uh, Councilmember Pompey, and anybody else that wants to speak, then we'll go to public comment.
Oh, just a quick quick comment. I think one of the reasons why homeownership becomes a goal is it's it's a wealth building thing, but also because we have. Tax benefits in place, you get a tax credit for paying your mortgage, and you don't get a tax credit for paying your rent. Um, and so, you know, the 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 way we set up our, and that's of course a federal thing, and we don't have any control over that. But the way we set up tax incentives encourages homeownership, even though. There's a lot of reasons why, if they were more equal, many more people might like to rent. Because of the flexibility and the ability to move for jobs and all sorts of other things. So, those are problems that are way above Greenbelt.
Thank you, um. I just wanted to comment on one of, one of, um, Councilmember Mitchell's comments that, you know. We are fortunate to have any rent stabilization legislation in our county, like, I'm glad that we have some. Um, but I do think that there is more that we can do. Um, but I do think that there is more that we can do for people here at the local level. Um, I think it's really important that we create communities in our apartment complexes that are more stable, where people are staying longer, um, where community can really build real community. Um, I mean, I think that that could address a lot of the issues that we have in some of our apartment complexes, it's just the, having more stability there. And, um, but I also, um, am very interested in, I was thinking a lot about when I read Dr. Stacy's materials and hearing her talk today, um, one thing that I've been thinking a lot about is, while I believe rent stabilization is very important, I believe it's very important to have caps on, um, uh, on, on rental increases, but I do believe that it's just one tool, uh, it's just one thing that we can do to, uh, make housing more affordable here in Greenbelt, and I'm really hoping that we can continue working on other, other ways, 'cause there are other, there are other issues in this, this city that make it difficult to live here, it's not just rental increases, right? Like, there are other things going on that I think, um, we can address in a policy framework as well, so, um, thanks.
Dr. Stacy, do, do you want to, uh, comment on any of the, the dialogue that's been going on here?
No, I mean, this is great, um, the speaker online, I was, I mean, so powerful and, and so important, um, and, you know, it just makes me think, you know, looking at the county's regulation, and, I mean, maybe one next step for you all could be thinking about, okay, what are, who are the households that would be maybe missed in, in the county's regulation, and think about, you know, is an additional rent stabilization, or even like a, um, what places are calling like anti-gouging regulation? So like, for instance, since the county, um, exempts buildings built after nineteen ninety-nine, if you're worried about those newer buildings, maybe you could think about some sort of anti-gouging law, which means, it's just like a higher limit, right? So you wouldn't get that crazy, um, example that, that the speaker was talking about, Councilmember was talking about, where rents were increased by some ridiculous amount, it could be even like, you know, ten percent, you can't raise it more than ten percent, or, or something like that, um, to think about, like, where are those gaps in the county's regulation, and then are there other policies that, that you have, um, control over that you could use to help kind of fill in those gaps? Um, and then there's also just been a lot of talk, um, throughout all this about kind of code enforcement issues, which, um, I think is another area, um, that most places can, can, um, ramp up as well, and that's also on the proactive, when we talked about enforcement, um, the more you can be proactive in your code enforcement, you can, um, get ahead a lot of, of a lot of those issues that you were talking about, which can be related to rent stabilization, they can just be related to, um, landlords not acting in good faith. And so, we've also got a lot of research on that, if there's any interest in that, um, because I think what happens is code enforcement agencies tend to have to, like, they get so inundated with complaints and concerns and have to, like, respond to those, but they tend to be minor things that aren't really health and wellness-related, and so the more that, um, code agencies can focus on those, like, more serious, like, bad actor landlords, or, um, health and wellness issues, and, and be more efficient, and that way you can kind of address those concerns at the same time that you're addressing affordability. Um, so, yeah, but no, this has been a great discussion, it's really, um, great to hear you all talk about this, so thank you.
And there really are some bad actors out there, I mean, uh, we've cited some examples, uh, if, if a landlord, uh, you know, I, I've heard, uh, a lot of stories about private equity funds coming into some communities, I haven't really seen proof of that in Greenbelt, and just buying up a lot of property, uh, trying to create a situation where, uh, if there are renters, you know, increasing the rent and forcing them to move so that they can force them out, and then, uh, you know, upgrade, just renovate the, uh, the property. I think that may have, uh, happened, it's certainly happened in a lot of other places. Uh, I think we should pivot, uh, go ahead, uh, Councilmember.
I was just gonna say, like, I, I, that's definitely true, and we do absolutely in this city see instances of, um, people leaving their rental units because they cannot get remediation, um, even when they're repeatedly calling code enforcement, even when their, uh, fines are being levied against these landlords, they cannot get remediation, we just, uh, we were just dealing with an issue of, of that hap, I mean, multiple issues, but there was something that recently happened that brought that to mind, but, I mean, there's, and it's like, it's, code enforcement is, is good, but they can only do so much, so it's like there has to be another step of how we're, how are we, how are we handling these bad actor landlords? Like, when we, you know, when court, code enforcement has come multiple times, when several complaints have been lodged, and things are not getting better, like, what next? And I feel like that is something that maybe we, we could do better at addressing.
Let's take, uh, comments from the, the public here. Mr. Orleans has had his hand up for quite some time. Mr. Orleans?
I wanted to thank you all who were responsible for bringing this, uh, bringing this statement to the, uh, to the program, but, Lord, I think you presented a kind of further question, but anyway, you just were saying, um, we have more time, probably tomorrow night, uh, uh, this is, uh... I don't know if, uh, Ms. Ashley Mullin wants to, uh, project, uh, uh, slide sixteen of your slides, uh, page one oh three of thirteen, one thirteen. Uh, well, first let me say that I had the, either the benefit or the burden of living in New York City for thirty-five years, and I, I never lived in a rent control apartment, I had friends who did, I lived rent stabilization. Uh, I could never really figure out what the rent stabilization board formula was from year to year, uh, and I cited the perspective that it shouldn't be the rent stabilization board which is, is, if the landlord can justify a request for a rent increase, and it's proven, it's demonstrated, it's accepted by that demonstration, then, uh, under rent control, you can actually, uh, have a higher percentage increase than under stabilization. I wasn't particularly happy about that, but the formula makes more sense than just simply saying, uh, we can't have rent control, all the evidence you cited in your study, uh, on either side, it's bad for tenants, it's good for tenants, I, I, I'm on the side that it's good for tenants. Uh, rather than, uh, pursue, uh, stabilization, the question between stabilization and control, since everybody is, seem to accept that we're gonna call it stabilization, and this goes back to three years with the Prince George's House Justice Coalition, I'll accept that it should be stabilization. Uh, page, or slide sixteen, uh, is very interesting. Uh, who's to determine what fair return would be? Uh, I certainly acted behind that committee that would determine what fair return should be. Uh, even Martin was suggesting that he agrees with consensus in that landlords should be at the table, and, uh, their interests should be, uh, recognized, and I'll recognize them, I won't agree with him, but I'll recognize them. Uh, uh, it should be determined, uh, whether we're calling it stabilization control, that the landlord has a responsibility to maintain, uh, a, a, a safe and, and decent apartment. And if the landlord is not capitalized sufficiently to maintain the safe and decent apartment, and, I don't know what the code is in Greenbelt, in New York, what, every ten years you got a new refrigerator, whether you needed it or not, and by then the roaches were so thick in my old refrigerator, I needed a new refrigerator. If the landlord is not capable of maintaining, uh, safe, uh, abode for, for his tenants, then he should get out of the business. Oh, shoot, shoot. Uh, I would like...
Allow Mr. Orleans to, to continue on a little bit longer.
Can you wrap up, please, Mr. Orleans?
I'm, I'm about to wrap up. Uh, I, I think the debate hinges on fair return, and I am not on the side of the argument that suggests that we must accommodate our landlords. I'm on the side of, of the argument that suggests our landlords should be tasked with running, uh, safer abodes with a reasonable rent, and somebody has to be the determinant of what a fair return is, and, uh, in, I, I don't see a problem with each municipality making that decision, and when Greenbelt takes up what a fair return for its landlords are, I, I hope the room will be packed. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Stacy, thank you for providing us with a lot of contact text and just good information on this topic of rent stabilization, a lot of food for thought, uh, just in talking about, uh, the research, talking about lessons learned from other jurisdictions. And I, I think there are, you know, more things that we need to, uh, find out with some of our neighbors. For example, uh, College Park is a community that has a large number of apartments, rental apartments for all of the students, and I know that they have talked about rent stabilization from time to time. Uh, I don't believe they have anything in place now, but I, I know that it's been a topic of discussion for quite some time, so I'd like to kind of hear, uh, their take on, uh, rent stabilization. It's a balancing act, and we've, uh, a few times said tonight that in the city of Greenbelt, or for the past few years, we've had a couple of instances with, uh, apartment, uh, owners, uh, who frankly did, did not have the means to, uh, to make the repairs that they needed to make. So when it comes to enforcement, with the code enforcement, the city doesn't want to be in a, a position where we're condemning a property and, and the, the residents have to literally go someplace else to live. So, uh, it, it's really, uh, it's a, really a balancing act, uh, to try and, on the one hand, uh, have protections in place, to have the affordability and, uh, increases managed, but at the same time, uh, making it possible, making sure that, uh, good landlords have, uh, the resources and the ability to respond. Uh, I see, uh, that you've got a, a comment, please.
Oh, Frankie Fritz, uh, twenty-three, uh, Ridge Road. Um, I worked as both an activist, uh, when I was living in Montgomery County, um, and it's been very exciting to see since twenty nineteen how much the debate has evolved. We were told that it was impossible to do in twenty nineteen, and Tacoma Park was the only place, like, south of New Jersey that had any form of rent regulation. Um, so, there's so much to say, and obviously, we're not gonna get to all of it in the four minutes that Mr. Orleans took, or the three minutes I'm gonna try and take. Um, but, uh, I'll just say that, um, I think it's really important, as the county looks at its law, we should try to lobby for a piggyback in their regulatory structure, can we work with them, um, for municipalities to set lower caps, but, but duplicate that kind of enforcement level. Um, because I do think that there are smaller markets across the, the county that could use more specialized laws, um, and if the county already has the infrastructure to do that, all the cities should get together and, and try to distribute that kind of, uh, rate setting, um, and then work with the county to, uh, you know, pool enforcement. Um, I'll just say that, really, when I highlight, um, Councilmember Mitchell's point about Montgomery County, I worked on the county council, um, and I was part of drafting a law that included the provision that included a rent freeze for any, uh, troubled property. Um, so there's a really significant regulatory structure in Montgomery County where we do triennial, uh, proactive inspections, and that's a really powerful tool. So we got much deeper into apartment complexes to see the actual impacts, uh, of our regulations, um, and we were seeing whether they're enforced, and just that leverage of saying, you cannot raise the rent on your property, and even if you sell, the next owner cannot raise the rent on this property until these issues are remediated, brought seventy percent of the landlords at the table in one year. There had never been a drop that significant, uh, in, since twenty sixteen when that law was adopted. It is a very powerful tool. Um, and that was based off of Berkeley's rent control board, they have an elected rent control board, which is one of two in the country, uh, so they have a different way of doing it. Um, and then I'll just say that, um, as many people have said, displacement is what we're trying to fight with rent stabilization, we're not trying to fight disinvestment, those are two different policy battles, and we need different policy tools to address that. Um, homeownership is a tool that, you know, a lot of places are looking, there's always a constant debate over rider first refusal or tenant opportunity to purchase act laws. Um, Prince, uh, or DC has been pulling theirs back, but the state of Maryland has actually been advancing theirs. So now, single-family homes are, oh, are a part of TOPA, there's a TOPA law across Maryland for single-family homeowners to purchase their homes. We should look at how we can help enable financing for people, just in the way that Greenbelt neighbors came together to buy this federal complex, uh, and to turn it into a cooperative. So there's a lot of different tools that we have. Um, and finally, I'll just say, um, the most important tool that we have, um, is trying to work with tenant organizations, trying to encourage tenant organizations, because if you do not have relationships and networks in buildings that are constantly meeting the new neighbors, that are constantly, um, educating people, um, all these laws are just paper. So, tenant organizations are really the key tool, I think, to kind of tie the whole together.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, uh, I wanna, looking over at Mr. Summeron, you've been listening very intently, and you've got some experience in, uh, housing policy, I was wondering if you, do you have any impressions to share?
None that hasn't already been covered, Mr. Mayor, I think the, the presentation is very thorough, looking at the national landscape and the regional landscape, and I think, uh, you have a lot of levers that can be pulled on. I think it depends, uh, what is in the context, uh, of the problem that we're trying to fix and, and what we wanna incentivize. So, there's, even within that, there's still a lot of, a lot of things to, to talk through.
Okay. Well, uh, Dr. Stacy, once again, thank you so much for, uh, for sharing your, and commuting all the way over here from Alexandria, Virginia.
I know, we're a different state. No, of course, thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I guess we can kind of post some, uh, we have a link to the materials, uh, out there.
Packet online.
Okay, and if there's any additional references that you, uh, can think of that might be helpful, uh, please share them, and we can share them with the public as well. So, thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
And I don't believe you have any information, well, we've got information on it, please.
Uh, we do, but before we move on to there, I, I wanna, uh, note that we added some local data from, uh, Greenbelt, so we've had, uh, our economic development team look at pricing, uh, per units in Greenbelt. The data, the graph, the yellow, sorry, the presentation with the green background, uh, is titled multi-family rental data trends and projections for the city of Greenbelt, and this is data we sourced from CoStar. There were a lot of tables in CoStar related to rental data, uh, Zihan and the team, and John put these, uh, charts together to give you a, a snapshot of what we're seeing in our local market.
Well, well, thank you so much. Be interesting to kind of contrast this with the, uh, the regional data, if there's some way of, of having another line of the metro, the DMV versus Greenbelt, I think it would be helpful. This is very, very helpful, thank you so much. So, and you do have any information on?
Uh, yes, as, uh, many of you are aware, uh, we have an election coming up on November fourth, we need, uh, more election clerks and judges, so please get the word out, we got applications.
And let's see, uh, the, the age requirement for that, is it, uh, twenty-one?
No, we, um, for the clerks, for the clerks, we are accepting, uh, folks as young as, uh, sixteen, as council had previously discussed, uh, for the judges, because there's greater responsibility. Uh, for those judge positions, we want them to be, uh, eighteen and older, and with some experience. The judge roles does require some experience.
That's fantastic, what does it pay?
Uh, what is the pay? I, my question, I, I...
I have a question, so answer me.
I, I, I believe the clerks are one twenty-five, and the judges are two hundred, but I'll double-check, but it, it's, it's a, a, um, a stipend-based pay. And then the trainings, I do know that for every training we provide, it's twenty-five dollars.
Ah, it's not bad, not bad. Yes, Councilmember?
Here's my question, um, so, you know, s- our election day is not a holiday, it's not a school holiday, so our sixteen-year-olds will hopefully be in school, um, so are there opportunities if they just wanted to do it for early voting on the weekend? Is that something, or do you have to, if you sign up to be a clerk or a judge, are you committing to both election day and, um, the early vote?
I would speak, I would speak with the team, but I think the election clerks, we do have that early voting, and, and that's from, uh, nine to three on Saturday, so I think that's a, that's a more workable, workable schedule. Um, I, I don't see why we couldn't. Now, for November fourth, you know, there's no greater civic lesson than running, helping run a campaign.
I mean, it's really true.
Right? I think we can speak with, uh, Dr. Barnes and see what kind of service hours we can provide, and, 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 and a really enriching experience for, um, our high school students, specifically, specifically those that are in political sciences or looking for a career in political sciences.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and let's go ahead and, uh, call the...
I, I have, I have one more.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more, one is...
We have goodies, we have goodies, we partner with Pepco for these, uh, energy-saving kits, utilities, uh, increases on the rise, so we've got several hundred of these boxes that we distributed to cares, and we're also making a case available to Shamar in the space... We're also making a case available to Shamar in the space, it contains some energy saving equipment like showerheads, so. There's still high flow, I hear, it's high efficiency water saving kits, but with good air uh water flow. Uh and a few weather stripping and uh power strips that are eco-friendly, that not all the outlets are on at all times. So you can sort of uh limit those uh vampire, electricity vampire devices.
Very good, very good, so uh would they call to 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 pick one up, uh cares or?
Giselle arranged this, uh you know, Giselle has partnership with the uh with Pepco, we partner with uh one of the members of Pepco for the kids cuts. On uh Spring Hill Lake. Uh so it's part of the relationships that we have with uh with Pepco, and you know, we're not a, we're not afraid or ashamed to beg sometimes, so.
But they just have to, someone just has to come to the cares office to pick them up.
Cares off and office, and we'll make some available to the space for Shamar, so they can also go there.
Okay, well, thank you, that's great news, thank you so much. Okay, once again, Dr. Stacy, thank you so much. Have a good evening.